And $585,000. Next category is exterior projects and you see the list gets a little longer and is equates to $5,563,000. What's really in this group is masonry projects, structural masonry issues, not tuck pointing or cosmetic. And larger pieces, this old steel window and door replacement to replace those windows and those doors with, excuse me, with more energy efficient windows and doors. Next category identified was interior projects. Once again, the list gets a little more encompassing across the district at $12,025,000. Those really fall into some main categories of flooring where we replace the damaged tile with epoxy flooring that, resin flooring that lasts much longer, or replace the carpeting in a classroom or in a library setting. Lighting and ceilings, lighting replacement, the district's embarked on that effort in the past and we continue to upgrade lighting to more efficient, better lighting. And as you do that, the ceilings are in need of replacement at the same time as you do that work. And a large effort, wall partitions, we have a lot of wall partition, portable wall partitions in kindergarten classrooms at the middle school level, and many of them are broken in kind of a jar and people are just kind of swinging in between each one of them, monitoring classes. As we do a classroom without door, we tend to convert that to a permanent wall with high window just for light purposes and a permanent door. Also helps with safety and security in those classrooms. Next is bathrooms. Many of our schools have aging bathrooms in need of renovation and we've allocated $1,167,000 towards that. Specialized instructional spaces at middle school and high school level at $5,140,000. What's discussed here is auditorium renovations. Olathe East is in need of a new lighting and sound system. Olathe North is in need of a full renovation of their auditorium. It's really the last piece of that facility that needs renovation. At the middle school level, six of our middle schools are in need of a third music room that the other middle schools have. Since 2008, the last bond issue, we have seen a 33% increase in the participation in our music programs and therefore we need appropriate space for those students. Instructional support space. As many of you know, our book depository suffers from a water issue. It has a subgrade unloading area. As we complete the tech support building and vacate space at the West Dennis tech support area, we contemplate moving the book depository to the West Dennis space, make the necessary repairs to the book depository by eliminating that drive and making it a permanent wall. We can then move the resource materials to that space in the IRC, freeing up space for additional offices and meeting rooms, which would allow us to relocate people out of North Lindenwood Service Center, which is in need of repairs across many of these categories, and look to sell North Lindenwood Service Center. That movement and renovation is at an estimated cost of $1,700,000. The final piece of this thread is activity center work, specifically synthetic fields. This is a picture of after opening game last year at ODAC, that Saturday morning after a rainy Friday night. The reality is it's $18 million to create another deck for this district, to put five high schools into the system and utilize the fields. We would need to turf, or put synthetic fields on four of the fields at each of the complexes, one football, one soccer, one baseball, one softball, at $8,383,000. That brings the aging facility thread to $41,563,000 for a total of $237,415,000. The fifth thread, even though Shannon mentioned four, was really what we call parking lot issues. These were issues that really did not make the initial plan and went through a lot of discussion with the bond task force. And in the end, they fell into two categories. Those on the left were items that the task force wished the board to consider, and those on the right were seen to, while some may have merit, they may have a solution that comes down the road or in a future bond issue. The first is Arbor Creek Flex Room. We've always contemplated putting an addition on Arbor Creek to relieve its larger enrollment. The idea of a flex room that would provide space if their enrollment were to decline or through a boundary adjustment in the future, if a flex room would still be used, it's very strategic and would be valuable to the school long-term versus if their enrollment dropped and you had a large addition that was no longer needed. So at $500,000, a recommendation to provide that flex room and can't, can't, cannibalize some of their activity areas for additional classrooms currently. Manchester Park, while we've done additions to Manchester Park, they're in need of a conversion of a classroom to an art room. They are currently doing art on a cart and that would be at a cost of $100,000. Next piece is a district tennis complex, contemplated in the district years ago, but was not done, and it's become an inequity across the districts, our surrounding districts. When we host a regional or state competition, we go to Lawrence to host it or another neighboring district because we do not have that facility available in our boundaries. Next is educational center, steel windows and door replacement. You notice we had a lot of steel window and door replacement elsewhere in the plan. We had not brought forward the education center, but it makes sense to bid all of that at one time, and the group recommended moving that into the matrix. Second, middle school gym at three of our middle schools. Second gym brings a lot of equity of opportunity to those students. These particular schools have kind of a flexible gymnasium. We drop down tables out of the walls or pull tables in for lunchtime and then you, it has a multipurpose floor, you pull them out and you now have a gym. The problem is, as the schools get bigger, that is occupied most of the day and it's not really about just the extracurricular activities. It's about some of the interdisciplinary, large group activities that are so key to the middle school concept, we need that gym available at all times. Finally, is the completion of the traffic recommendation when we did a traffic study to help alleviate some of the traffic you saw in the video at Olathe South. The final recommendation was a dedicated lane next to the entrance of Heritage Elementary that is one way in the morning, one way in the afternoon to help relieve that pressure. When we consider pulling those particular projects into the matrix, we add $7,385,000, bringing the total to $244,800,000.
So as you can see, the bond task force had a lot of information to digest and were able to provide direct input and feedback on all of it. The task force was overwhelmingly supportive of a fifth high school, as well as additional high school land and a 36th elementary school. We also felt that the safety and security projects really needed to be a priority so we can provide a safe and secure learning environment for all of our students in the district. In the area of technology, we were supportive of increased access for our students, particularly when we talk about improving our ratio of student to device. Along with that, the bond task force really recognized the need for flexibility on the district's part. We were talking about items that may or may not yet be available, but will still have an educational impact for our students. So we recognize that it's absolutely essential that the district have that flexibility as they plan future technology growth, whether that be for devices or the infrastructure that would support those devices. As the task force talked about what we were as a district in that first meeting, we recognized that a commitment to equity in facilities was something that made us, we felt unique and was important. Because of that, the task force supports the projects in the aging facilities thread, believing that we not only owe it to our kids to provide that equitable experience, but also as good stewards, it's kind of our duty to make sure that we're maintaining the investments that we've already made in facilities. John mentioned the fifth thread, the parking lot. The task force would also like to ask the Board of Education to have further review and discussion on synthetic turf for the rest of the fields at the two decks. This was one thing that, and it was frankly the only thing, that the bond task force did not come to consensus on. We had a lot of great discussion, we probably went back to it two or three times. There are compelling arguments on both sides, and so while we didn't feel it merited inclusion in our formal recommendation, we would ask that the Board of Education take a look at that amongst yourselves and further review and discuss that. So as we come through this process, we've seen the need, we've seen what we feel is a good plan that has some reasonable solutions to address that need. And then the next question becomes, and probably the question for everybody, is this affordable? Can we do this? And so for that, I'm going to turn it back over to Mr. Hutchison for that discussion.
Thank you. When we talk about affordability, we really talk about what we call the debt curve of the district. And the most simplest way to put this is we have to figure out the framework that we're going to move forward from. Next year, with or without bond issue, our mill rate will be 17 and a half mills. I remind the board that for the last two years, we've had a decline in that levy due to some refinancings that had occurred previous to that, and was scheduled to return closer to the 19-mill mark. It will be, the requirement next year will be 17.5. If we do this additional bond issue, it will still be 17.5. As we, as we project out for the district, the debt curve for this upcoming bond issue, as long as we stay within that gray area, it's considered a no tax increase bond issue. 17 and a half mills can support this going into the future. It stays at 17 and a half, projected to stay there till 2018, 19, and then begin to decline as you've seen kind of repeated every three to five years in this district. It's very common for high-growth districts to see that decline and hope that that's it, and then the growth pushes it back up. The idea is to try and keep pushing the curve to the right, but don't let it rise up any higher than it already is. Two key variables that drive that whole modeling of that debt curve is assessed valuation growth and bond and interest state aid. The assumptions behind the assessed valuation is that we would grow 0% this year and 2% annually thereafter for a 10-year, and our 10-year average is 2.6 currently. Based on the assessor meeting I was at this week, that 0% is really 2.3% this year, so we're in good shape already out of the gates. And we were told to project, start using 3% growth for Johnson County, however, we're leaving it 2%. Bond and interest state aid is the other key component. We currently receive 22 cents for every dollar we make of bond payment, so 22%. The model's built that that would decline to 19% for several years, then 17, then 15. We feel that's a conservative estimate. If assessed valuation does not reach that kind of growth that I just mentioned of 2%, these are inversely related. And generally, though it doesn't have to work this way, because we grow so many kids, the state aid is based on how much real estate value do you have behind each of your students? And we, because of our growth, become poorer and poorer real estate value-wise, and the state gives us more and more bond and interest state aid. You have to grow poorer relative to the rest of the state, so if everybody drops, you don't increase. But generally, they've had an inverse relationship. But there are discussions in Topeka that affect that. There's a House Bill 2264 that we're keeping our eyes on. 2264 basically would put a moratorium on that bond and interest state aid for two years, for any bond issue that does not occur prior to this coming July 1st. For us, that equates to $80 million of state aid at risk, and affected the discussion of the timeline for this particular bond issue.
So as you can see, as a task force, we had the privilege and the benefit of being able to see all of this information, to discuss the needs, to see the plan, and see that there were some reasonable solutions that could help meet the need, to see that it was affordable. But then the question arose, what if we didn't have the benefit of that 10 hours of discussion and debate and information? And so now I'd like to introduce Chris Tatham from ETC, who's going to help us put some color around that discussion.
Chris, can I stop for just a second? We need to take a comfort break at 7:00. I'm not sure how long you've planned. Do you think you can do it in five minutes, or should we take our break now?
Maybe six, but I'll be quick.
You can be quick?
Yeah.
Okay, we'll obviously come back, so you'll stick around for after the break in case there are questions?
Super. For those of you who aren't familiar with the ETC Institute, we're based here in Olathe. We have clients in more than 600 cities and counties across the country, including 11 of the 20 largest cities and 10 of the largest 20 counties. I've managed bond issue surveys for this district the last three times, and we've surveyed over 30,000 people who live in the district in the last 10 years. So that's some of the basis for my experience in making some of the calls that I'm going to explain to you today. First thing, I just want to share with you the methodology so you're comfortable that this really does represent what voters in the district think. We administered this survey in February to a little over 400 registered voters. The overall results of the survey have a precision of about plus or minus 4.8% at the 95% level of confidence. That just means if we did the survey 100 times, 95 times out of 100, you expect to get these same results within about 5%. So they're very accurate. It's very similar to surveys we've done in the past, so I take a look at the results this time and look at what happened last time as some of my basis for interpreting the results we had this year. Just to get a sense for what residents think of the district, it's not surprising that people have a very positive perception. You'll see over half the people that we surveyed rated the district, "Quality of education provided by the district is excellent." We look at that as strong brand equity. Anytime you're getting the most intense favorable response, that's a great thing. To have over half the registered voters feel that way, even better. You notice only 1% rated the quality of education here as poor. So for everybody who doesn't think it's good and comes here and complains, there's 83 people out there that think it's good or excellent. In addition, we want to assess not just what people think of the quality of education, but what they get for their current value of their taxes. And you can, so we also had 83% who said that they do get good value for what they pay to support education here. Only 6% said no. So again, your ratio of positives to negatives is extremely high. With that said, we threw out the question, would people support a bond issue to basically support the variety of issues and investments that have been presented this evening? And you can see this was done at the beginning of the survey, without a lot of additional information, 83% of the people said they'd be very likely or likely. Having done a lot of surveys like this over the years, you can usually count on the people who say very likely to show up at the polls and vote yes. The people who don't know or not likely, probably are going to vote no. It's the people that say they're likely that kind of flex back and forth. But typically, about half of those who say likely, you can generally count on with a moderately successful education process. We then tested each of the areas that you're considering investing in, and you notice that there's extremely strong support for all but one of them. In fact, of the areas that were looked at, the maintenance and improvements to existing facilities, safety and security improvements, upgrades to technology, the new high school and new elementary school, you had almost half or more of the people say they were very supportive, and you'll see there's very few people who were not supportive. We actually threw in the artificial turf question into the language on the activity center because we sensed that it would potentially be somewhat controversial, and even though we asked people about that, you still had by nearly a two-to-one ratio, people being supportive versus those not supportive of that investment. With that said, we then asked people what they thought the most important issues were. In other words, if you're going to hang your hat or actually promote this bond issue based on a few key things, which should they be? And you'll see that safety and security, new high school, and the upgrades to technology were the top three areas that people cared the most about. The activity center were the least important to folks. We then put back the question to people in more specific terms now that they'd had the educational information and re-asked them. This time, we put dollar amounts of the question to see how it changed their response. And you can see the percentage of people who are very likely dropped just a couple percentage, it's still nearly half at 48%. Those who were likely at 33%. Altogether, you had over 80% who said they were very likely or likely, only 10% were not likely or not likely at all. In addition, to see if a smaller bond issue would make much difference, we then asked those who were opposed to it whether they would then support a $200 million increase or a $150 million bond issue, and together it only raised support by 2%. So the bottom line is as long as you don't raise the tax rate, people really don't care what it costs, and having a smaller bond issue isn't going to increase the overall support for this issue significantly. Finally, we put together the question as it might read when you actually present it to voters, and we read it to folks and asked people whether they would favor or oppose. And you see, again, we have over 80% of the people saying they would favor it, just 7% said they would oppose it. We also tested the concept of whether or not the fact that you get matching fundings from the state was a good thing, and whether people thought this was a good time to move forward because of the opportunities to get those matching funds. And you'll see 65% supported that idea, and perhaps even getting a larger bond issue as a result to take advantage of those, that additional funding. A lot of folks didn't know, but the percentage that were not supportive was, again, only 9% or about 1 in 10 voters. So with that, these are the conclusions from the survey. I think the overall support for this bond issue is very high. I'd recommend you pursue the $250 million option since it was widely supported by your voters. Reducing the size of the bond issue really isn't going to make much difference as long as you don't raise taxes or the tax rate, that's really the key thing. The only negative in the survey was the artificial turf issue, but even with that, you still had a two-to-one ratio of people supporting investments in the activity center by making those changes compared to those who opposed it. So with that, I'm going to turn it back to John.
So as we came to form a formal recommendation for the Board of Education's consideration, we really felt like, okay, there's three questions that we've got to answer, and you've heard me ask them throughout this presentation. One, is there a need? And I think clearly there is. Two, are there reasonable solutions that'll address that need? And I think, again, the answer is yes. And then, is it affordable? And we've seen that it is, so another yes. So with that, I'm pleased to bring you the formal recommendation of the 2013 Bond Task Force. It is a recommendation of the 2013 Bond Task Force for the Board of Education to consider a bond issue in the amount of $244.8 million to address district needs as outlined in the areas of growth, specifically a fifth high school, high school land, and a 36th elementary school, as well as projects in the areas of safety and security, technology, and aging facilities. And with that, we'd be happy to answer any questions.
Very nice, thank you. We will take a very quick five-minute comfort break. When we come back, we'll do awards and recognitions, public comments, and then we'll have a chance for board members to ask some questions.
At this time, we're going to do recognitions and awards, and Mrs. Martin is down there to assist Maggie, so I will let you get started.
Sounds good. Good evening.
I don't think the microphone is on.
Yeah. Good evening. We have numerous recognitions tonight. I'd like to welcome all of our distinguished guests. We're going to begin our recognitions tonight with a business partner. I'd like to ask Heather Skunover from Community Development to come forward to help with this recognition. Tonight, we recognize Farmers Insurance. Farmers Insurance is a longtime community partner with the Olathe Public Schools. Their support to students, staff, and families is present on an annual basis. This year, Farmers increased their support to the school supply and backpack program through the Olathe Public Schools Foundation to $7,500. Employees also give their time to pack grade-specific supplies for students in need. They have an adopt-a-school partnership with Ridgeview Elementary where they fund food for the Sneak a Peek Back to School Night. Farmers also brings the fifth graders from Ridgeview to their Olathe campus to have students gain insight for career exploration. Our community partner also consistently takes two student interns to work in their claims department and enhance the 21st century learning skills. To build relationships with our staff, Farmers also welcomes a teacher each summer through the Teacher Extership Program. This provides educators the opportunity to find real-life curriculum connections to be incorporated into the classroom. The Farmers team also gives support to our construction trades program. Students, administrators, and teachers visit the National Property Claims Facility and participate in sessions on workplace safety and interviewing skills led by Farmers employees. They were a major contributor to our habitat projects that the students worked on. We thank Farmers Insurance for being a strong partner with the Olathe Public Schools, and I'd like to ask the following individuals from Farmers to come forward to be recognized. Vince D'Onofrio, David Ranky, Jeff Bell, David Younger, Tiffany Lowe, Jim Godfrey, and Tiffany Galvin. And next, we'd like to recognize the staff members who were named district nominees for the 2014 Kansas Teacher of the Year for Elementary and Secondary and the 2014 Emporia State University Master Teacher Award. The Kansas Teacher of the Year Program, sponsored by the Kansas State Department of Education, identifies and recognizes excellent teachers at elementary and secondary levels. The Emporia State University Master Teacher Award honors experienced teachers who demonstrate exceptional qualities. These three individuals will now go on to the next level of competition. Would the following please come forward? Lori Bettis, Bentonwood Elementary kindergarten teacher and District Kansas Teacher of the Year Elementary nominee, along with her principal Kathy McDonald; Kelly Almar, Santa Fe Trail Middle School Science teacher and District Kansas Teacher of the Year Secondary nominee, along with her principal Carrie Lane; and Kathleen Willhite, Olathe South Math teacher and District nominee for the Emporia State University Master Teacher Award, along with Assistant Principal Carrie Zimmerman. Congratulations and good luck to each of you. Thank you very much. Our final recognition tonight is of Cassie Wong, a senior at Olathe Northwest High School, who has been named a recipient of the Prudential Spirit of the Community Award. She is one of 102 students nationwide to receive this honor. Cassie, if you could come forward, along with Olathe Northwest Senior Counselor Gina The Prudential Spirit of the Community Award Program is United States' largest youth recognition program, based exclusively on community volunteer service. As a state honoree, Cassie will receive $1,000, an engraved silver medallion, and an all-expense-paid trip to Washington, DC in May for four days of national recognition. Cassie began the nonprofit Youth Hope Fund more than a year ago. It has helped provide scholarships to children in China and has helped others getting back on their feet after the devastating tornado in Joplin. In one year, the organization raised around $8,000. In addition to this award, Cassie was recently named a candidate for the Presidential Scholar Honor and will be attending Harvard University in the fall. And is your family here tonight?
Um, no, my mom is out there.
Okay. Thank you very much, congratulations, Cassie.
Thank you so much.
At each regular meeting, the Board of Education reserves limited time for individuals wishing to address the board. We request that individual speakers limit their comments to five minutes. The clerk will monitor the time and notify the speaker when the five-minute time limit has expired. Please direct your comments to the entire board. If a response is appropriate, the president will respond or refer to another individual. In an effort to respect privacy, we ask that speakers refrain from discussing personal complaints involving individual staff members or students. Those speaking are advised that public comments are videotaped recorded for broadcast on the district's educational access channel and audiotape recorded as a matter of public record. Individuals addressing the board should come to the podium at the front of the room and state your name and address. I don't believe we have anyone this evening. If anyone would care to make a public comment, we have a moment for you now. If anyone would care to make a public comment, we have a moment for you now. Okay, seeing none, we will go on with questions regarding the Bond Task Force presentation. So I open it up to board members.
I would make the comment that I truly appreciate the effort of the Task Force. Thank you very much. This was a lot of information to sift through. Thank you to you all for making sure everybody stayed on task and got the information that they needed. It seems like it's a pretty, been a pretty thorough process, and for the most part, consensus was reached, and I do appreciate that. I also appreciate the fact that we have survey results which are very positive. I don't think, since I've been on the board, our community has ever not been very positive about supporting our school district, and I think that's because we provide a good product for the children and we provide a good investment for our community. So I'm appreciative of that. Also appreciative that we're staying under, or staying at seventeen-point-five mils. Thank you very much. Those are my comments.
I really was awake, but I would like for you to explain again how the mill levy stays at seventeen-point-five. Is it through refinancing of existing bonds and other debt falling off? Can you give some more comments on that?
It's basically the other debt falling off, because it's, in its decline, the new debt layer is right on it, stays at the seventeen and a half.
And what repayment schedule are we proposing for this bond issue?
The typical repayment schedule that we've done in the past with the level debt service principle each year.
And how many years is that?
I'm sorry, twenty years.
Twenty?
Yes.
I also had a question. Is Chris Tathan still here?
He is not. He had to leave to get a family member.
Okay.
We'd be happy to convey any questions to him and get responses.
Okay, I can shoot those to you in email, and if you could pose those to him, I appreciate it.
Well, I don't necessarily have a lot of questions, but again, I want to thank everybody that was on the Bond Task Force also. I know it was a lot of work and a lot of information that was put out there. You know, one of the things, comments that I do want to make, in looking at the four different threads, the one that, you know, I'd like us to continue to look at and really work more towards is the technology. You know, you look at the overall bond that we're asking, two-hundred-and-forty-four million, two-hundred-and-fifty million, and technology is only about, what, ten percent of that that we're asking for, to be able to continue to grow in the technology. You know, it's just interesting, if you look across just everybody that is here today, how many people have a smartphone or a computer or whatever the case may be, and it's a very large percentage. And John, correct me if I'm wrong, but you were saying at the elementary level, we're still only, we're somewhere between four to one, okay? Kids today, as they move on to college, as they move out into careers and things such as that, technology is going to be such a big part of this, and unless we get caught up with that and put the technology in their hands and teach them with that, they're going to be behind. And so, I mean, that's one thing I want us to continue to look at, and if we have the opportunity, put more money into that, get more devices, get, make sure that we're utilizing the technology, because they're going to need that moving out into their careers, moving to colleges and things such as that. So that's one thing I'd really like us to continue to look at and see, is there a way to be able to continue to grow that within the district?
I agree. I would like to second that informally, of course. Technology, you know, it changes so quickly, so I'd love to keep my thumb in the back on technology as well. On the debt curve for two-hundred-and-fifty million, the blue chart bar that you had that represents the current mill or what it will be going up to, how does that taper off if we do not issue a bond?
I can get you the specific year, but I believe it's another year or two, and then it, then it begins its decline.
Okay, so...
Once again, is that pushing that curve to the right?
Okay, another year or two from now or in addition to?
Correct.
From now, okay.
Two, two years.
Okay, okay. Very good. And then, do you remember, well, you remembered, the capital real-thick, three-ring binder of all of the facility aging needs, and you had indicated green, red, yellow based on the need? So within this bond, can you say that all of the red and yellow and much of the green has been addressed, or how would you categorize that?
Well, green would be, it's in fine shape, so it addresses all the red and yellow with a combination of this or a previous bond, or some are projects that are, we're getting ready to start this year. So yes, it addresses all yellows and reds.
Okay, and then every classroom without doors, we will never hear that word again, right? This will solve that issue, right?
That is correct, unless we remove one for some reason, so yes.
We've talked about the timeline for the high school, the planning, the drawings, the construction, being about a five-year timeline. How about the rest of the bond issue, the other, the safety and security, the aging facilities, the technology? Has there been a discussion about the timeline to accomplish all of those projects?
There has been. We've been concentrating on how quickly could we do the safety and security measures, touching twenty-two elementary schools with pinch points, and we believe we could begin that immediately as well. Others would be staged more across several years.
I'm not sure I understood what you said about the pinch points in the schools.
The, moving those entrances to the front of the building, while it's, that is generally begun in the spring, like an April timeframe, and available by August, while a large endeavor, we could accommodate that construction all at one time.
Okay.
Whether or not we choose to do that, we want to explore, can we implement that all beginning next year?
Can you speak a little bit about the staffing for the fifth high school, any additional elementaries? Because this will not touch that at all. How do, how do we handle that?
We handle that through the additional Court of Tax Appeals piece and additional local option budget piece. As the bond issue dollars come online, you have less reliance on the capital outlay piece, which will free up some of the levy room for the LOB and Coda funds, levies, so that the overall rate does not move, but we generate operating dollars for those schools and some additional operating dollars.
Okay, and then, what's the assumption on the capital outlay with that wiggle room mill levy? How we increased it just recently? So what will we need to take it down to to keep the mill levy flat?
Three, four mill range.
Okay, and then will that leave us with hearing that we're deferring maintenance, or is that taken care of by the bond?
Pretty much taken care of by the bond for several years. And then we'd still have some capital outlay that we'd be generating.
That's a great question, Lea, and I'm glad you asked that in terms of the operating of the new facilities and so forth, because I don't want people to think, well, sure, they're keeping our bond and interest levy the same, but then they're going to increase operating expenses. As you know, we are limited by what we can raise in terms of our general fund and our local option budget, those are capped, but we would make sure that the overall levy is maintained and taxes do not go up, as John said, by utilizing the capital outlay.
Dr. Barry, could you also speak to the fact that when we open new buildings, and we've been doing that as we did with Mission Trail and I believe Forest View, in most, as much as we can, we're staffing that with teachers who are already within our district?
That's correct. It's been a necessity in recent times. We opened Forest View, I think, completely. HR did a wonderful job in staffing that with current teachers. You obviously bring on a new administrator at like at an elementary and a new counselor, but yeah, the cost, we've been able to work out and keep it so that it's not been an impact on the district at all. It just seems to make sense, obviously, if it's a school that's growing and crowded, you take those kids and move them to a new facility, you're going to take the equal number of teachers to teach those kids as well from those schools, and they don't have to be all new teachers.
We talked about the change in assessed valuation, and you commented on the district, as the district grows and there are more students, that we could feasibly become a poor school district because of the increase in student enrollment. Could you elaborate a bit more on that, because there would also be new homes built and additional commercial development? So what's the basis for your observation about the fact that we could become a relatively poor district?
The percentage growth of our student population is outpacing the percentage growth of assessed valuation. Therefore, it becomes a smaller and smaller per pupil assessed valuation, which in the eyes of that state aid formula says, oh, they need additional state aid to equalize them to the rest of the state. Now, if that happens across the state, you don't move, but the state's sort of stayed the same, because we're one of the few fast-growing districts, so we, on paper, look like we're getting poor valuation per pupil-wise, and that percentage has been ramping up every year, fourteen, fifteen, seventeen, nineteen, twenty-two. And if it would continue at that rate, we're assuming it's going to go down, we actually believe it'll continue to go up, because our student growth will outpace our assessed valuation growth.
Is that also impacted because some of our student growth, at least at the high school level, comes from students who are already in our system, those larger class sizes?
I'm not quite sure if I understood the question.
Well, the students are already here, so some, our increase in student population is caused to some extent by new development, but in a lot of cases, those kids are already living here.
I call it the baby carriage effect, yes. Many of them are already living here, but they haven't entered our system, and we're seeing that in that elementary wedge that's moving through.
I haven't heard it called a baby carriage for a long time. They're usually strollers, I think, but John's right that way. It is purely a wealth-per-pupil basis, and they actually line them up across the state in terms of a ranking, wealth-per-pupil. So again, to focus on some of the other school districts in the state, think if you're a rural school district that's declining in enrollment a little bit, which evaluation is basically staying the same, they will actually look to be richer on paper, fewer students by the same value. And again, as John said, we're gaining students with a fairly flat valuation, so we appear poorer on paper. So that's why we've benefited from that in recent years.
Well, in addition to that, the makeup of our population that's in assessed, assessed value, we're the bedroom community, not the ideal. Do you want to explain that a little bit, John?
We're what's considered, all these analogies, bedroom community, which means we are, we have higher residential assessed valuation versus commercial. Neighboring districts have more commercial assessed valuation than we do. We have homes and kids, and that's what makes up our assessed valuation, whereas others might have the same assessed valuation, but it's in commercial, which means they don't, the commercial's not generating children that we have to educate.
Shannon, you mentioned that despite the large, despite the large number of individuals in your group and the large number of topics and a big amount of information digested, there was really only one area that you didn't come to consensus on, that was in that fifth area, that parking lot area, and talking about turfing all of the fields at both ODAC and SEABACK. Do you want to elaborate a little bit on what, what your committee considered to be positives to doing that versus the committee members who felt that was a negative?
Sure. So on the positive side, you get additional community usage out of having those fields available. We don't want people on the fields, especially if we've got additional high schoolers, because the fields get torn up. You don't have that issue with the, with the synthetic turf. The other gives us an opportunity also for potentially renting those spaces out. They can be used sort of all year round. We could have, hold tournaments, practices. There's no shortage of community people who are looking for practice space, who are looking for tournament space. And so, those were some of the positives. Another one of the positives was a perception issue. You know, currently, we heard the stat that there's only four high schools that aren't playing on artificial turf, that are playing six-day football in highs, in Kansas, and they're all four here, obviously. Another that was brought up as, as a positive, and I didn't realize this, but as people are coming to tour our community, who are thinking about moving into the area and deciding where they want to live, as high school athletic directors and principals are telling us that the first two things that parents want to see on a school, the first two questions they ask on a school tour, what's your ACT scores, and can we see your athletic facilities? So those are some of the things on, sort of on the positive side. It's, we feel like there might be an inequity between our neighboring districts. Okay, so then you have the, the other side, and we went back and forth on this a lot, the cost. If we're going to turf these fields, how long will they last? Is it an absolute necessity, or is it a want or a need? And those were the types of things that, that we really wrestled with. Would they pay for themselves? How often would we need to, to turn around and re-turf these fields? And so, again, I say, you know, we probably went back and forth on this two or three times. It kept coming up, and so we thought that the best thing was to say, hey, we had a great discussion on this. Maybe you'll do better.
Okay. Probably similar to discussions that we had when we made decisions to turf at the high school, right?
Yeah.
I know at the previous Bond Task Force, I think all of the members signed off on the results at the end. Did you do anything like that?
No, we didn't have any formal...
You didn't have, could you characterize, do you think you had one-hundred percent agreement with this recommendation? I know we made an effort to invite people from the community who aren't necessarily always our supporters in an attempt to get their feedback, and so I'm just wondering, after all is said and done, did we, did we really get everybody on board? Were there one or two people who thought, hmm?
I feel like this was a very, very engaged group. I might feel differently if we had one or two people that were really outspoken and a lot of people that weren't engaged, but I really believe this was a very engaged group, asked a lot of good questions. I don't feel like if there were anybody that didn't agree, there was ample time, and we did have those discussions. Things moved from the parking lot to the recommendation and back to the parking lot. So I, I think that we really do have, have consensus. I really do think we have one-hundred percent on this recommendation.
We did a couple activities, and Shannon said it so well. You know, from early on, Dr. Barry and Shannon made it clear to the group that, that they were asked to be there to stay engaged and to have voice, and we asked them throughout, leave us notes, send us emails, and we ended our final session by asking, did we have consensus? And, and they were in agreement, and if anyone there wasn't comfortable agreeing at that time, they were to jot it down on a note card and leave it for us, or send us an email. We got lots of note cards, none about not reaching consensus. People wrote in comments and questions and debated topics throughout our sessions on those note cards, so we had a format in place should someone have wanted, had a dissenting opinion, and our feeling was the same as Shannon's, that all were on board, with the exception of some back and forth on the Activity Centers.
Yep.
I have one comment. I want to piggyback on what Mr. Shear said about the technology thread of this. We talked about students being prepared for technology when they leave us, but one of the things we also can't forget is how, all the ways that technology today makes our teachers so much more efficient than they were even five years ago. So I don't think we can even imagine the tools that are going to be developed over the next five years, and so we really need to make sure we're building that infrastructure so we can take advantage of those as they become available. And then the other comment I wanted to make was regarding the survey results that we saw. I look at those, and I mean, I was like doing high fives when I got my board docs, because this, it looks like it's a slam dunk if we decide to go ahead with this, and I don't want us to get complacent about that. We still have our work to do to educate the public, to bring people along, because, I mean, how many hours do you guys suppose you spent studying this? You know, our average voter isn't going to devote five evenings to learning about these issues, so we really need to make sure we're diligent about communicating this need to the public and, and sharing what we heard tonight in a way that resonates with people, gets them out to vote and gets them to support, assuming that we decide to go for it.
Well, since there have been two comments on technology, I will add a third one. I don't disagree with what Rick and Amy have said, but on the other hand, I don't want our students sitting in front of a computer from the time they walk in the front door until they leave. There has to be personal interaction to develop communication skills, and the greatest example I can give is what I'm seeing in my workplace. When we have meetings with clients, there will be three, four, or five people, they're all talking and interacting. Yes, there will be a laptop or an iPad or something to retrieve information, but there's still a lot of inner communication going on, and technology is not the solution to everything. They still have to have the tools to be able to communicate and find the, the information that they're going to need and develop the spreadsheet. Now, they need a computer to do that, but they need to know where to get the information. So I guess I'm approaching the technology piece with a little bit of caution.
Quick question I have is, you know, if you look at the testimony of the people...
Quick question I have is, you know, if you look at the testimony of the people talking about Common Core to the legislature, one of the things they talk about is the high cost of the technology that's going to be required as far as the testing and everything else. Have we looked at that? And is that something that's been included in to the technology numbers? And if so, is that, is there an estimate on how much that is?
I'm going to give this a shot.
Okay.
I believe it's really in the purchase of those devices, and we're still somewhat tied to.
Devices.
The listed devices, the laptops, the iPads. It's really about that laptop. Right now, for assessment purposes, we still need those laptops in order to go through the assessment process and those standard tests.
It's a good question, Mr. Poland. And we currently test the number of kids that we would be approximately testing with Common Core. And so it's no different from what we currently have. The difference that the committee talked about, and a young teacher on our staff got real excited about it and shared the personal example. What happens currently in the spring when we do have to test? We have enough computers to do that, but we have to pull them and collect them to do that, which means everything else shuts down in the class in terms of technology use. So teachers plan for that and can account for that. But what this will allow us to do is to still have enough machines now that we can keep them in the classroom, and you're not without some kind of technology device for four to six weeks while we're in a testing period. That's a good question.
And you'll make sure that next year you don't declare Snow Day during assessments?
During testing or during when? I'll work on that.
Leave town again.
Thank you.
Okay, Board members, are we ready to move on?
Just a couple of quick comments from me then, as we wrap up. And, you know, whether you're in the audience and you've seen this before as part of our task force, or whether you're seeing it for the first time, there is a little bit of sticker shock. I mean, there's no doubt about that. I also want to commend our task force. They were wonderful. They came in on time each night and engaged, I thought, asked great questions and wrote great questions for us to follow up on. But there was that little bit element of, gosh, that number looks big, you know? And each time when we would add layer on to it, in terms of proposing things, they hung right with us. One night, I thought we were going to have to pump a little more oxygen into the room when it started getting big toward the end. But, you know, what's remarkable about this community is that, I think there have been 15 bond issues in the history of the school district. And so it's not like we're asking something that's not happened before of our community members. Over those years since '65, members of the community have stepped up and provided through property tax on their house and other ways, adequate funding to make sure we had adequate facilities for kids. That's what I, we look to you as the seven members of the board, obviously, that it's a responsibility that all of us have to provide adequate facilities for our kids. And I always take the approach that I don't think we ever have to apologize for assessing these and studying it and bringing it forward. And so that's why we've talked about, if we can show that there's a real need and that it's a reasonable solution and that it's affordable, then I think we have a fighting chance. We need to educate our community and let them make the decision. That's really what it comes down for. And they will tell us whether it's appropriate and reasonable and affordable. And so I think that's important as we go forward. Tonight, later in the agenda, you'll be asked to set a special meeting to continue discussion of this and to wrestle with nothing else but the $244.8 million of bond issue. The date being proposed, the latest date that we can go and still have a June 11 election would be March 25. So as you think through that and come to that agenda item later in the evening, we need to decide if there are more you would like to hear and you need an intermediary date before that 25th, or whether you think things can be worked out. But I mean, there's, once we hit the 25th, you know, there's no going back. If we say, well, can we take a couple more weeks or have another meeting? It would be, all it would do is it would be postponing out of June that bond election, if that makes sense.
Thank you. Shannon, thank you very much. And to all the members of the task force, on behalf of the board, we really appreciate the effort and the work that you put into this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Dr. Berry, do we have any more input on whether they're going to continue the?
State aid. Yeah. It's actually something that's quiet right now and not being worked. We obviously are watching all those. I'll give a little bit of an update legislatively later, but that's not one that we have any report on.
Then we will move along on our agenda. Next up, we have our consent agenda. Eight items. It looks like our standard minutes, financial and accounts payable reports, human resources, a student trip, a change to the zoology curriculum, or maybe addition of a zoology curriculum, I believe it is, and our Head Start work plans. Is there any discussion or items that board members would like to have pulled for individual consideration? Then I would accept a motion.
Well, I move to approve the consent agenda items numbered 5.01 to 5.08 as presented.
Second.
Ms. Hibbs, I have a motion by Mr. Shear and a second by Mr. Poland. Would you call the roll, please?
Ms. Ashley?
Yes.
Dr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mrs. Felter?
Yes.
Mrs. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Poland?
Yes.
Mr. Shear?
Yes.
Motion carries. 6.01, approval of the student information system replacement software. We have two motions to choose from tonight. One includes a five-year software maintenance agreement. The other includes a 10-year software maintenance agreement. And at this time, I think we need some discussion amongst the board about our preference.
I would appreciate a clarification on if we choose to go with the five-year software maintenance agreement. How the annual maintenance agreement then would be calculated going forward from that point, beginning with year six? I wasn't clear on how that works.
Whether you approve the five-year or the 10-year maintenance agreement, the annual cost, the $173,000, I don't have that exactly in front of me, remains the same. I did talk with the vendor today about how that would play out in the payment schedule. And they are willing to, if you choose to go with the 10-year agreement, we could pay years six through 10 after the end of five years, if you so chose to do that. Does that answer your question?
Would it be, I think she was asking maybe, is it calculated on our enrollment in year six and then the increased enrollment in year seven?
Excuse me, I didn't.
I think that was your question.
It is. And the only way we can lock in these amounts is to pay that maintenance agreement upfront.
You would pay the first five years upfront, correct. But year six through 10, the vendor is willing to set those payments at the end of the fifth year, and then you would pay year six through 10. And yes, it would lock it in at the cost per student at our student population as of this year.
If we pursued that option, then would the dollars come out of our operating budget? Or could we also pull those?
It'd be my understanding if you wait and made a separate payment for year six through 10, it would be operating funds.
Okay. As if we do it now, it comes out of the bond.
What is your, I mean, your professional opinion on this, the difference between five and 10 years now? You know, five years, and you look at technology, and technology throughout, a lot of things change, and it's going to change more rapidly going forward, you know? Is buying some software where you're paying the maintenance and you're tying yourself down for 10 years, that's a long time out for software. I mean, that's probably where I've got the biggest question, is going quite that far on something that is likely going to change out in a shorter period.
I certainly understand that. And I, you know, I'm not, I'm mixed. I certainly think we are, is to our advantage to go with five-year maintenance agreement, without a doubt. We don't go into these software purchases of this magnitude thinking that we're going to change them out even in five or six years. The software that we've been on, of course, we've been on for a long time, over 20 years. We only had one other package before that. So in the history of the district, we've only had two different student information systems. Of course, before that was paper and pencil. So we're not going into this thinking that we're going to change this out again very soon. However, you're right. You're locking yourself into something that in year six, seven, eight, nine, if you're really not satisfied with this software package, then maybe you've tied yourself into something a little longer than you wish you would have. I certainly recommend that we go with the five-year at a minimum. I wouldn't, I mean, that's why it's out there, is to make sure we lock ourselves into five years. Beyond that, I certainly understand your concern.
You know, and so just one more point on that. I mean, and again, 1.6 and 2.5, I mean, that's nothing to sneeze about. But then again, you look at the overall budget and the overall expenses of the entire district, that is still a small percentage. If this was a $10 million purchase or something larger than that, maybe extending it out might be important. You know, I, and again, my, just looking at this, my biggest concern is tying something down for 10 years, especially with the rapidly changing technology. You know, Mr. Hutchinson brought it up. It was only three years ago we had iPads. Well, things move so much quicker, and they're going to continue to move quicker now. And so it would just be a concern tying it that far out in 10 years. And at a 1.6 million, it's a big number, but it's a small number in the general scheme of things.
In the history that I've been working with software packages of all kinds, from our time and attendance to finance, you know, all kinds of packages we've worked with, I've never had a vendor that offered to do something with a locked-in rate this far out. It's very unusual that they give you that opportunity. But again...
You know, and then, again, you don't want to be on the negative side of it, but the likelihood that they're around in 10 years. Okay, I mean, there's, again, there's a lot of things, are they here in five years? But 10 years out, that's just a long period. So I just kind of...
Are we, I think I read that we're purchasing the code as well, though?
We are.
So is it feasible that if they're not here in five or six years, that we could take over and perform the maintenance on it ourselves?
That's why we like to find packages that we can purchase and own outright so that in the event we decide to cut our ties with that vendor, we would still have several years in front of us that we could maintain it ourselves. I'm not anticipating that's going to happen, don't get me wrong, but that is a positive.
But that doesn't necessarily have to be a concern. I completely agree with your concern that technology will change, and 10 years is a long time. I don't think any of us at home would buy a 10-year personal computer.
If you look at the, if you had to purchase a whole new system in five years, you're paying about, what, 30% more than what the cost of the 10-year fund, or 10-year agreement would be? So I don't see any advantage going to the 10-year, that big advantage going to 10-year?
I hear, I think, three people in favor of the five-year. We need four to pass.
I would agree.
Okay, then at this time, I would accept a motion.
I'd move to approve the purchase of Synergy Student Information System from endpoint to include a five-year software maintenance agreement for a total purchase price of $1,696,918.
Ms. Hibbs, I have a motion by Mr. Poland and a second by Ms. Felter. Would you call the roll, please?
Dr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mrs. Felter?
Yes.
Mrs. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Poland?
Yes.
Mr. Shear?
Yes.
Ms. Ashley?
Yes.
Motion carries. 6.02, approval...
I'll take just a moment to thank you publicly for that, on behalf of the district and all the data users in our district, teachers, administrators. Life, there'll be a learning curve, obviously, but life will get much easier for us to access and utilize data. We will be, again, moving from the 1980s to a current system. So it's wonderful what you're willing to step up and do for us tonight. I thank technology staff for the study of that and going through all the vendors and the demonstrations, and it's wonderful. So again, by our length of life for the software, the board will consider it, again, in about 2040. But this is a great, this is a great step for us, so thank you.
And really, I suppose in Mr. Parker's absence, I should, as president of the board, throw out that warning that this better go smoothly? He likes to sleep at night. Okay, 6.02, approval of purchase of network printers. Any discussion? Then I would accept a motion.
I would move to approve the purchase of 100 Ricoh network printers at an estimated cost of $69,500.
Second.
Ms. Hibbs, I have a motion by Dr. Daniels and a second by Mr. Poland. Would you call the roll, please?
Mrs. Felter?
Yes.
Mrs. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Poland?
Yes.
Mr. Shear?
Yes.
Ms. Ashley?
Yes.
Dr. Daniels?
Yes.
The motion carries. 6.03, trade bids for elementary number 35. Discussion? Then a motion?
I move to approve the bids listed in the bid summary for elementary 35 as presented.
Second.
Ms. Hibbs, I have a motion by Ms. Felter and a second by Mr. Shear. Would you call the roll, please?
Mrs. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Poland?
Yes.
Mr. Shear?
Yes.
Ms. Ashley?
Yes.
Dr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mrs. Felter?
Yes.
The motion carries. 6.04, structural steel and concrete bids for four elementary renovations. Discussion? Then a motion?
I move to approve the bids listed in the bid summary for the four elementary renovations as presented.
Second.
Ms. Hibbs, I have a motion by Mr. Shear and a second by Ms. Felter. Would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Poland?
Yes.
Mr. Shear?
Yes.
Ms. Ashley?
Yes.
Dr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mrs. Felter?
Yes.
Mrs. Martin?
Yes.
Motion carries. Page three. Approval of white copy paper bid, RFP, for 1213, oh, wait, 1213-012. I'm not sure what that means. Any discussion?
I think that's just the RFP number.
Okay. Then a motion?
I'd move to approve the bid from Clayton Paper at $23.24 per carton for four to seven truckloads over a three-month period of time.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Poland and a second by, let's see, Ms. Felter. Ms. Hibbs, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Poland?
Yes.
Mr. Shear?
Yes.
Ms. Ashley?
Yes.
Dr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mrs. Felter?
Yes.
Mrs. Martin?
Yes.
Motion carries. 6.06, food service delivery truck. Discussion? Then a motion?
I would like to make a comment, though. It is nice to see us utilizing local tax-paying businesses and being able to return that by being able to buy that locally. So I'm just throwing that out there.
It's also nice when they are the low bidder.
That helps.
A motion, please.
What number are we on here?
6.06.
All right, so I move to approve the bid from Alatha Ford Sales Incorporated for the purchase of a Ford F-550 delivery truck for a total of $24,295 after trade-in of a 2000 Ford F-450 box truck.
We have a motion by Mr. Shear and a second by Ms. Ashley. Ms. Hibbs, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Shear?
Yes.
Ms. Ashley?
Yes.
Dr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mrs. Felter?
Yes.
Mrs. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Poland?
Yes.
Motion carries. 6.07, epoxy flooring bid. Discussion?
Yes, I have a question that really pertains to the next four approval requests, and I wanted to direct that at Mr. Thomason. On 6.09 and 10, we have letters of recommendation in regard to those RFPs as far as the suitability, I guess you would say, of those bids and the successful bidder. How do we go about determining when we're going to use an outside source to review
Yes.
Ms. Ashley?
Yes.
Dr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mrs. Felter?
Yes.
Mrs. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Poland?
Yes.
Ms. Shear?
Yes.
Ms. Ashley?
Yes.
Dr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mrs. Felter?
Yes.
The motion carries, 6.03, trade bids for Elementary Number 35. Discussion? Then a motion?
I move to approve the bids listed in the bid summary for Elementary 35 as presented.
Second.
Ms. Hibbs, I have a motion by Ms. Felter and a second by Mr. Shear. Would you call the roll, please?
Mrs. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Poland?
Yes.
Mr. Shear?
Yes.
Ms. Ashley?
Yes.
The motion carries, 6.04, structural steel and concrete bids for four elementary renovations. Discussion? Then a motion?
I move to approve the bids listed in the bid summary for the four elementary renovations as presented.
Second.
Ms. Hibbs, I have a motion by Ms. Felter and a second by Mr. Shear. Would you call the roll, please?
Mrs. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Poland?
Yes.
Mr. Shear?
Yes.
Ms. Ashley?
Yes.
Dr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mrs. Felter?
Yes.
Mrs. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Poland?
Yes.
Ms. Ashley?
Yes.
Dr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mrs. Felter?
Yes.
Mrs. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Poland?
Yes.
Ms. Shear?
Yes.
Ms. Ashley?
Yes.
Dr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mrs. Felter?
Yes.
Mrs. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Poland?
Yes.
Ms. Shear?
Yes.
The motion carries, 6.08, the track surface repair bid. Discussion or questions?
How long do we try to go between repairs to tracks?
In the five-to-six-year range, at least.
Then a motion, please.
I would move to accept the low bid from Rigs for Oregon Trail, Chisholm Trail, Frontier Trail, and California Trail, and MAC for Indian Trail Middle School as presented.
Second.
Ms. Hibbs, I have a motion by Dr. Daniels and a second by Ms. Ashley. Would you call the roll, please?
Dr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mrs. Felter?
Yes.
Mrs. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Poland?
Yes.
Mr. Shear?
Yes.
Ms. Ashley?
Yes.
The motion carries, 6.09-
I need to recuse myself, because I do business with these people.
Okay, thank you. Discussion on our HVAC replacement bids? Then a motion?
I move to accept the low bids from KC Mechanical for Black Bob, Indian Creek, Santa Fea Trail, and Midstates for Indian Trail and Tomahawk as presented.
Second.
Ms. Hibbs, I have a motion by Ms. Felter and a second by Dr. Daniels. Would you call the roll, please?
Mrs. Felter?
Yes.
Mrs. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Shear?
Yes.
Ms. Ashley?
Yes.
Dr. Daniels?
Yes.
6.10, we have the approval of roofing repair bids. Any discussion or questions? Then I would entertain a motion.
I move to accept a low bid from Bob Fraser Roofing for Mahaffey Elementary and Olathe East High Schools, and low bid from Boone Brothers Roofing for Prairie Trail Middle School as presented.
Second.
Ms. Ashley beat you out, Mr. Poland.
She can have it, she can have it.
I have a motion by Mr. Shear and a second by Ms. Ashley. Ms. Hibbs, would you call the roll, please?
Mrs. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Poland?
Yes.
Mr. Shear?
Yes.
Ms. Ashley?
Yes.
Dr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mrs. Felter?
Yes.
The motion carries. We'll move on to our other action items. Under 7.01, the approval of our bond sale authorization. We have Mr. Dustin Avi here from Piper Jaffrey, who's got some comments to make.
Good evening. Appreciate the opportunity to be here this evening. Before this evening, there are several resolutions related to the sale of bonds that occurred today. The sale of bonds was the remaining issuance from 2007 Bond Authority, as we have previously discussed. Prior to your consideration, you also have in front of you just a brief packet summarizing the sale that occurred today, 11 o'clock. Just want to take just a few brief moments and just highlight a number of things prior to the board taking action on the resolutions. The interest rate chart there that you see is a chart that we've shared with the financial community a number of occasions, but I thought the whole board may be interested in maybe some perspective in where we are from a market standpoint. A couple of things I'd like to point out. Obviously, we still remain at near or at record lows from a rate standpoint. As you'll see at the very top, since 1987, interest rates have been higher than their current levels 97.4% of the time. So we're certainly at very low levels. Prior to getting into the results of the sale, there's one other box I want to note. Since 1987, the average rate is about 5.5%. So keeping that in mind, the first summary that I wanted to share with the board this evening is the results of the Series 2000A General Obligation Bonds. The bonds were issued an amount of $11 million. The district received 11 bids for these bonds. The low bid came in at 2.849%. So we're certainly very pleased with the results of the sale for the Series 2000A bonds. These bonds maturen 20 years to 20-year amortization, again, at 2.849%. The second sale was a remaining authority which was issued as taxable qualified school construction bonds. And as you may recall, with the qualified school construction bonds, the federal treasury will pay the lesser of the interest rate on the bonds or the tax credit rate published by the federal treasury on the date the bonds are sold. Today, the published tax credit rate was 4.58%. And as you'll see here, the winning bidder, the interest rate provided by the winning bidder was 4.129%, obviously less than the tax credit rate, which obviously results in the federal treasury paying all the interest payments associated with the qualified school construction bonds.
Were there only two bidders on this bond issue?
You know, it's a good question. My theory is, is as long as there's one, it's always a good thing. I think that there's, you've all heard of sequestration, sequester in the marketplace here recently. That impacts qualified school construction bonds and Build America bonds. So it may have been more headline risk that would impact the number of bidders associated with that. But nonetheless, and from our perspective, anything less than the tax credit rate is certainly a good bid for the school district. Lastly, and Ms. Felter had this question during the bond task force comment period, the last page really just indicates the debt curve that you've heard so much about with respect to just your existing bonds without taking into account any future debt issuance or bond issues. And just a point of clarification, we had mentioned two years, it's really two budget years, beginning with the budget, 2013-14 budget, the bond issuance level will be going to 17 and 1/2 mils, as you're aware. With that, I'd be glad to entertain any questions. If no questions, I would certainly recommend approval of the appropriate resolutions.
This is now the fixed curve that we add on to.
That's correct, yes.
Taken into consideration in our presentation earlier, right? This is incorporated into our future casting.
Yes, and same assumptions that we've been using on the projections for the bond task force. Those same assumptions apply to this debt curve as well.
Thank you, Dustin, for your work on this. If there's no discussion, then we will need to do separate motions this evening. And at this time, I would entertain a motion on the Series 2013A bonds.
I'd move to approve a resolution authorizing and directing the issuance, sale, and delivery of general obligation school bonds, Series 2013A of Unified School District Number 233, Johnson County, Kansas, Olathe, providing for the levy and collection of an annual tax for the purpose of paying the principal of and interest on said bonds as they become due, making certain covenants and agreements to provide for the payment and security thereof, and authorizing certain other documents and actions connected therewith. Second.
Ms. Hibbs, I have a motion by Mr. Poland and a second by Mr. Shear. Would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Poland?
Yes.
Mr. Shear?
Yes.
Ms. Ashley?
Yes.
Dr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mrs. Felter?
Yes.
Mrs. Martin?
Yes.
The motion carries. A motion on the Series 2013B bonds?
I move to approve a resolution authorizing and directing the issuance, sale, and delivery of $17,500,000 principal amount of taxable general obligation school bonds, qualified school construction bonds, direct payment to issuer. Series 2013B of Unified School District Number 233, Johnson County, Kansas, Olathe, providing for the levy and the collection of an annual tax for the purpose of paying the principal of and interest on said bonds as they become due, making certain covenants and agreements to provide for the payment and security thereof, and authorizing certain other documents and actions connected therewith.
Second.
Ms. Hibbs, I have a motion by Mr. Shear and a second by Ms. Felter. Would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Poland?
Yes.
Mr. Shear?
Yes.
Ms. Ashley?
Yes.
Dr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mrs. Felter?
Yes.
Mrs. Martin?
Yes.
The motion carries. 7.02, bond compliance procedures. Any comments or questions? Then a motion?
I would move to adopt bond compliance procedures as recommended by the district's bond council, Gilmoreum Bell, PC, including naming John Hutchison the district's chief financial and operations officer as bond compliant officer.
Second.
Ms. Hibbs, I have a motion by Dr. Daniels and a second by Mr. Poland. Would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Shear?
Yes.
Ms. Ashley?
Yes.
Dr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mrs. Felter?
Yes.
Mrs. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Poland?
Yes.
The motion carries. Are we going to have to get Mr. Hutchison some plus-size business cards to handle all of his titles?
His titles only.
7.03, we need to set a date and time for our March special meeting. We've talked about the 25th.
25th, it's a Monday evening.
At 6:00.
At 6:00. Is that agreeable to board members?
Works for me.
Later the better, because I'll probably be coming home from Colorado that night.
Would you like us to push it back a little bit?
If we could.
It's your pleasure, whatever you'd like to do.
30 or 7.
6:30 or 7, just to be clear?
7 would be.
Okay, let's set it for 7:00 that evening, then.
I noticed we have a construction committee meeting on that day. Does that mean we may not meet in construction committee that afternoon?
We can take a look at that, so you don't have downtime in between. Is that what you meant? Maybe we can reschedule that meeting.
That, and will we be meeting?
Oh, I see.
Special committee.
I won't be here.
Yeah. Let's see what, yeah, let's see what we can do with that. You bet.
Thank you.
With that, I would entertain a motion.
I move to set on March 25, 2013, at 7:00 PM, the date and time for a special meeting for the purpose of taking action on a proposed bond issue to be voted on by the Olathe Community in June 2013.
Second.
I think the last one went to Mr. Shear, so I'll give this one to Mr. Poland. We have a motion by Ms. Felter and a second by Mr. Poland. Would you call the roll, please?
Ms. Ashley?
Yes.
Dr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mrs. Felter?
Yes.
Mrs. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Poland?
Yes.
Mr. Shear?
Yes.
The motion carries, 7.04, boundary adjustments for Washington and Mahaffey Elementary Schools. And I just, I have to make a quick comment. Dr. Berry, I didn't have one email or phone call about this. I really appreciate the careful work that staff has done to choose these boundaries and then to go out and address the concerns of the community and communicate the need so efficiently.
It's been a little while since we've set a boundary. Then we brought something to you, but again, staff did do a great job. It's something, we know the procedures and we make it transparent and talk to people out in the schools, and so we appreciate that. This is one that seems to make a lot of sense to people.
Any discussion? Then a motion.
I move to approve the proposed boundary adjustments for Washington and Mahaffey Elementary Schools effective for the 2013-2014 school year as presented.
Second.
Ms. Hibbs, I have a motion by Mr. Shear and a second by Ms. Felter. Would you call the roll, please?
Dr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mrs. Felter?
Yes.
Mrs. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Poland?
Yes.
Mr. Shear?
Yes.
Ms. Ashley?
Yes.
The motion carries. 7.05, our 2013-14 student fees and miscellaneous charges. Comments or questions? Then a motion.
I move to approve the proposed changes for student fees and miscellaneous charges for the 2013-2014 school year as presented.
Second.
Ms. Hibbs, I have a motion by Ms. Felter and a second by Dr. Daniels. Would you call the roll, please?
Mrs. Felter?
Yes.
Mrs. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Poland?
Yes.
Mr. Shear?
Yes.
Ms. Ashley?
Yes.
Dr. Daniels?
Yes.
Motion carries, 7.06, our K-12 English Language Arts Curriculum. Comments, questions?
I have a comment that the presentation was fabulous, so.
Noted.
Thank you. Just would like to make that comment.
Then a motion, please.
I will make the motion as well to approve K-12 English Language Arts Curriculum as presented.
Second.
Ms. Hibbs, I have a motion by Ms. Felter and a second by Mr. Poland. Would you call the roll, please?
Mrs. Felter?
Yes.
Dr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Shear?
Yes.
Mr. Poland?
Yes.
Mrs. Martin?
Yes.
The motion carries. We have thirteen items listed under our future action items. You can see them on your agenda. I won't read them. Are there any individual items board members would like to comment on at this time?
I would love sometime in the future to have a presentation on our Avid program. I think it's something that benefits greatly our students, especially in that kind of middle range, and it'd be great to kind of showcase how that benefits those students.
You know, we did that five or six years ago. It's a great presentation. I think it's definitely worth repeating.
Time to do it again.
Mm-hmm. We have a new group of students, I'm sure. Any other questions or comments? The board received a couple of written information items, an appraisal study, and our Head Start Monthly Directors Report. Comments or questions on that? Topics for discussion? Any board members have anything they would like to bring up this evening? You guys are quiet. Then we will move to Dr. Berry, superintendent's comments.
And again, thank you for your work of the past thirty minutes or whatever. It's been a lot of action taking place. It keeps a lot of projects moving on and curriculum piece and so forth, so very positive. Thank you. Want to share just a couple pieces of information that are very positive, and I always like to do that. It's a lot more fun. But we have announced and we will be spotlighting this person later, but the awards continue for our outstanding staff members, but we have a Master Teacher Award winner for this year, Julie Bleece, who's a first-grade teacher at Ravenwood, is recently named as one of seven from across the state. And so at a banquet on April 3rd in Emporia, she will be honored as a Master Teacher by Emporia State University. She's been in our district since 2004. Prior to that, she taught for fourteen years in the Hayes, Kansas district before coming east. Got her bachelor's from the University of Nebraska at Omaha, a master's from Fort Hayes. She's nationally board certified. She's working on her doctorate at Baker in her free time, I think. But you will have the opportunity to meet her in April as we recognize her for being an award winner as a master teacher. The second piece of exciting news that is kind of a time lapse, I'll take you back to when we had the exciting news that the students in the Distinguished Scholars Program won the Battle of the Brains competition from Olahtha North for the city, a competition put on by Burns and McDonnell. Not only did they win fifty thousand dollars for science and technology initiatives at their school, but they actually were going to get to work with engineers and build the exhibit that opens tomorrow at Science City at Union Station. So again, very exciting, not only for Olahtha North and the kids, but just really a nice award for the district in terms of something extremely visible, an exhibit at Science City, thought up, conceived and produced by our kids. So really exciting to have that happen tomorrow. I want to give you just a little bit of an update, and it's nice that we can do some things in a timely manner. I've written to you before that sometimes things are happening so quick day to day and things change. It's almost hard to update you very quickly because something else is happening the next day. But want to give you just a couple pieces this evening. The legislature actually returned from their four-day turnaround break on Wednesday of this week and started right in on hearing bills, and there's a full schedule set for next week as well. So we are monitoring those and trying to give input where appropriate. You know, one of the bills that we have a lot of interest in and we're watching is that House Bill 2027, which makes changes to the Professional Negotiations Act. There was a hearing held yesterday. It's my understanding it's going to continue on Friday. And so again, we're watching that to see what's going to happen, and we've talked to some people about it. We have a wonderful relationship with our teachers' associations and want to have that moving forward. But so it's something we're just, you know, there's so many bills that we're watching in terms of what the impact may be. Kansas Association of School Boards offered several, I believe, amendments yesterday to that. And again, as some members of that association, we kind of follow what some of their cues are. But they made an amendment yesterday to make it clear that boards would continue to negotiate with a single bargaining association for teachers, which I think is important. When that bill was originally written and talked about multiple units or multiple groups, kind of, you know, it was hard to understand how that might work out. Yesterday also, the House Education Committee held a lengthy discussion about Common Core. So as somebody mentioned earlier, that is being discussed at the state level right now. You have taken action based on local effort. Our teachers, our staff members, who have taken those standards and developed a local curriculum for our kids to use, that I think our staff members are quite excited about. But we will watch that bill. The impetus for that seems to be halting the money that would be spent on developing Common Core. Well, with your action, you know, tonight and what we've done with math, we're down that road, as are most districts. It is typical curriculum development that our staff members would be working on. So again, no additional costs that we know of at this time than what we would normally do for curriculum. Both the House and Senate are scheduled to debate identical bills dealing with innovative school districts. This is another one we've watched, because as I've talked to the superintendents, we weren't sure what it really meant. And I think it morphed a little bit today even as discussion came out. One of the houses has ten innovative school districts would be named. The other one, I think, has as many as twenty-eight. The basis for some of it seems to be there would be some of the rules and regulations from the State Department that these innovative districts would not have to comply with, which is, you know, again, interesting and intriguing, but we're not sure what that means for sure. In some of the discussion that I read about it today, it also indicates, well, if you're going to allow ten or twenty-eight school districts to not comply with some State Department regulations, how about some of the other school districts that might want to have some flexibility with that? So again, I think it's all to still be played out. Something that most of the talk, I think, right now is happening in the hallways, but it's about the governor's budget, and something obviously has to be approved, a budget for the coming year. And it all deals around the one cent or one penny sales tax and whether it will continue or not. We are greatly interested in that. Not that we want to continue a tax again, but if it is not continued unless they have other revenue sources, there would be a large hole, and the fear is that education would be hurt greatly, just because we are a large percentage of the budget. We're reminded of that quite a bit. Another one, Senate Bill 132, which may show up now from the House side, deals with ancillary waiting. There are only four school districts in Kansas that are impacted by ancillary waiting, and we are one of those. This is the Court of Tax Appeals, the extra money that we can levy locally, all hundred percent local levy, to help open a new school, and then it gets phased out. In tough budget times, that's a big hit, because we have a large hole that is created when those drop off. The bill is being carried to say it would still go down for taxpayers, it would just not be as rapid. So it's a little bit of a softer landing, I've heard a superintendent say, for districts, and it helps us stabilize our budget just a little bit. So we're very interested in that as well. So that's kind of a quick update about things that are going on in Topeka and some of the bills that we're watching.
Dr. Berry, could you give us a quick update on the school funding lawsuit? And does that have any impact? Will that affect next year's budget?
You know, it is being talked about a great deal. Again, sidebar conversations, as some of us were in Topeka yesterday and you hear talk about that, but no, it is nothing that, at this point, will impact directly budgeting, because again, we are almost mid-March and headed towards some resolution by, the session could end without a coming-back session April 1st. So we're not far away from some resolution, and that court case will not be resolved by then. As you've followed the papers, we know that there's been some court-ordered mediation. But again, the thought that I've heard is that it still will not play out in time for any impact for this next budget year. Now, you are seeing some things line up that they think are helping to maybe mediate that outside of the courts. One thing happened this afternoon, is a bill that we've known that's been out there previously, is to, the state gives us twenty mils of general fund, and then districts can have up to thirty-one percent of their general fund for a local option budget. That's raised locally with some state aid for those districts that get it. The concept is to take ten percent of the local option budget and call it part of the local operating budget and count it into the state share, the state aid part that they put in. Not going to be any different money for us, it just would come out of our local option budget, so it gets reduced, stays with the state, comes to us in a per-pupil basis. So the new per-pupil state aid basis is like forty-four twelve or something, is what I read this afternoon. That comes very close to looking like what the courts say we should have. Does that make sense?
So they're just counting the money differently?
Counting the money differently, taking it from money that's actually right now in the local option budget, but putting it into the per-pupil base. So again, the court case is not impacting us now, but there are some things happening with regard to it.
Is that all you have this evening?
That's it.
That's it.
Ms. Martin, I'd like to step back one, and I know that's out of order as far as topics of discussion.
We will allow it tonight.
Just tonight, anyway. All right, so I'm going to plead, being the new person on the board again, I know I don't get to play that card much longer, but me and fairly know on this. One of the things, I just wanted some clarification, maybe we could have some discussion about, is, you know, I've been getting more and more correspondence from parents. And I guess I just wanted to have some discussion and maybe a little clarification, you know, across the board here of, you know, when we get something from an individual parent that's addressed to all of us versus somebody that's, that something's addressed to just one person as an individual, not setting guidelines, but maybe just having an understanding of, you know, I don't think many, a lot of these parents want to get seven different responses. Is there a way, or what do we do, or is there something we've done in the past where we say, okay, can we bring it back and have one person, if it's to everybody? Not trying to limit anybody, but being able to make sure that the parent doesn't feel overwhelmed when they get seven different responses in some cases.
That's an interesting comment. I think, it's too bad Mr. Parker isn't here, because we addressed that a little bit in our boardsmanship document, I think, that it's the board president's responsibility to respond on behalf of the board, but we don't, I don't believe we really draw out the circumstances in which that happens or in which it doesn't happen. I agree with you. I think, I think there are actually, there are probably some parents who have a complaint who would like to get seven different responses, because that boosts their argument, maybe. I'm a little hesitant to tell board members what they shouldn't do, but I do agree that it streamlines the process a little bit, especially, I know recently we've had a couple of things that have come up that have required some consultation with legal staff and/or maybe a real detailed answer. So I don't know, I guess I need to figure out what is the board's preference on that as far as, is, I don't know, waiting to see what the board president response is. As the public probably knows, we can't really exchange emails behind the scenes. All of our business has to be conducted here in public, so it's difficult for us as board members to coordinate any kind of a response. So, Dr. Berry, I don't know, do you have any thoughts on that?
Well, yeah, I'd make a comment, I guess, you know, there are many times that you receive an email that you will contact, then me, and I contact staff, because we need to provide assistance in answering, because many times it's details or specific situation and someone needs to be talked to. It's a great clearinghouse to come through the superintendent and then I work with staff so that all seven of you don't have to pick up the phone and call the principal or an A.D. at a school and say, can you tell me what the situation is? That just makes sense. It might be, and again, I would, I'm totally open to this, it might be a preferred practice that when an email is written to all seven board members, and it's either includes the superintendent or then shared with the superintendent, that the staff would immediately say that we will respond, and we'll get the information. And it can either go back to the board president to respond for everybody, or it can go from us. Either way is fine, because number one, a patron has written all of you, and so they know that you're aware of it. And then if administration provides the answer, sends it to all seven of you as well as the patron, then the patron also knows that you received the answer and we're all on the same page. So I mean, that, in terms of time and those of us that get paychecks as opposed to you, that's the best way to handle that, to let us do the work and we provide it to you. Now, there are times where it's not all seven. It's times that it might be less than that. There are times where it's a patron or a person that you know or go to church with or is a neighbor. That's something you're going to want to answer directly. You still would contact, get any information you need from us, but the answer would go to you, and you can get that contact or that answer back to the person. I'm perfectly good with that as well. We want to help, we want to do the legwork, but we're willing to answer it and proceed any way you would like to do that.
My main concern is that everybody responds quickly and thoroughly, and if a constituent or a concerned citizen or parent or student is complaining about staff or administration, it's a little awkward to have administration answer it. So I do like the idea of, in those circumstances, to have a board member answer, and it could be, we develop a procedure. I do know that you verge on speaking for all, if you, and it's too clunky to say, what do you think, guys, edit at will and send out, and we can't really do that, you know? So it does feel right now like there's holes that the communication can fall through and things get dropped. I'm feeling that.
Well, I think it's important, sometimes a patron would contact the board members but not copy you on it.
Right.
And so I do think it's important that they get a response from us somehow, not, I get that we're busy and all of that, but I do think we take on that responsibility when we assume this role. And so I know, as board president this year, I'm happy to respond on behalf of the board. I do think it's really important to not commit the board to anything, to not take a position. A lot of times that response is really just a thank you, and we will move this along to the correct people. But sometimes people do have something they want to add to it. So I don't know, maybe, maybe the correct way to go about it is to wait and see what the board president response is, and then after that goes out, feel free to add your own. I do know that we had a, we had an email the other day, and I responded immediately saying, thank you, we'll get back to you. I didn't copy all of us, but I did let the patron know that we had received their email and something would be done, and then I copied the whole board when there's a response. So I do, I do try to get something to them right away, even though it's not necessarily the answer they're looking for, but just an acknowledgement that it's been received and someone's looking into it. However, I'm the board president, and so it's easy for me to say, I'll do that. And I guess I need to hear from other members what your preference is on how we handle this.
Well, I certainly like the idea of waiting until the board president has provided a response, and based on that, I'm assuming that the board president is going to be in consultation with the superintendent to provide an appropriate response. I guess my question would be then, is it okay for the board president to copy all of the board members on the response that the board president provides to the patron, so that we know the response has gone out and what the response is?
Sure.
And then once that has gone out, I think we all should, if we want to provide additional information or give our perspective, then we should feel free to do that.
I like that.
I think it'd be helpful if you liked the one that Scott gave some input on. If, in your response to us, or you say, you know, when you forwarded on to us, that you say, yes, this was done with consultation with counsel.
Okay.
Just, you know, just so that we know a little bit of the background of what's gone, you know, where the information came from. You know, just something short and sweet here.
I do think it's important, that brings up a good point, that whenever there is consultation with counsel or with Dr. Berry, that, that any information that comes back comes to all board members, even before the president responds.
And I, you know, I don't know how the rest of you do. Sometimes if it's, somebody has a real passion in their appeal to us, sometimes I will just respond to them and just say, hey, this has been turned over to staff and to the board president, you'll get a response. If you don't feel comfortable with the response you've gotten, feel free to contact me again. You know, just letting them know that, you know, hey.
I think.
It's not a dead-end road for you.
That would be an entirely appropriate follow-up from individual board members to go out, yeah.
I think that's a great idea, and I do a similar thing when I respond to people, both to let them know that they should expect a response from staff, and if they don't get it, they should get back with me, and if they're unhappy, they should get back with me.
When I send one out to, if it's sent to me individually, I indicate that I'm going to forward it on to Dr. Berry, and that the appropriate person who responds will copy me on the response, so that patron would know that I'll get a response at the same time.
Just going along with the recent, one of the most recent ones where we got an input from somebody that appeared that is not a school district patron, I would like, you know, I think it's totally appropriate when somebody addresses us that way, just a phone number, that we ask them for the same information we ask somebody that sits up there for, you know, public comments. Tell us a little bit about where your kids go to school, what your address is and what your phone number is. And if they don't respond to that, you know, I don't, I don't, I don't feel the same necessity to respond to somebody that's not a school district constituent, so. I don't think we need to waste staff's time and our time, because as big as we are getting and as big as we are in the limelight, we're probably going to get more and more of that stuff. And I think we need to make sure people properly identify themselves if they're going to write to us and expect an answer from us. And I don't think we owe it to anybody that's outside the school district.
We'll kind of firm up what you've talked about in a procedure and share back with you to see if it is what you are wanting to do, and we can do that. I usually try to give out your phone numbers whenever I get some.
I want to know how long Mr. Shear can play the new guy card. Thank you very much for bringing that up. Okay, I believe we need an executive session this evening. Dr. Berry, the board needs about thirty minutes. Do you have any additional time you need?
I think we probably have, need thirty as well.
Okay, guys, we'll set it at sixty minutes. Is there a motion?
We'll help you.
I would move to, I would move that the board adjourn to executive session for the purposes of discussing personnel matters of non-elected personnel, to consult with, to consult with an attorney for the body or agency to discuss matters relating to employer employee negotiations, and for preliminary discussions relating to the acquisition of real property, and that the board return to regular meeting at nine twenty-five P.M. in this room. The executive session is required in order to protect the privacy interests of the individuals to be discussed, to protect attorney-client privilege and the public interest, to protect